So that's what you call it. It's like a three year.
They call it now work.
I think we'll get started.
I will call it order this regularly scheduled meeting the Board of Education, which was duly noticed November 10th, 2017 through posting a notification to the press in accordance with the Wisconsin statute nineteen eighty-four. And that's our privilege tonight to introduce Jayden Chan, is that right? From Edison Middle School. Is your mom, mother, you want to come up? Come up, stand behind me. Just wait a minute, Jayden. Get your mom up here. But when you're ready, let me know. Okay? All right, Jayden.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to get a picture of me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Excellent. Safety message, I'm sorry, consider approval of November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, Board of Education agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes eight zero, nine zero. Thank you. Safety message.
All right, safety message, some tips for managing stress around the holidays with Thanksgiving next week already and Christmas, just about a month or a little over a month away. These are ten tips for managing stress, so manage your stress response. So that means some self-awareness, it's okay to take deep breaths, it's okay to step away from the situation a little bit. A couple of the other really good ones, I'm not going to do all ten, but stick to a budget. So this is one that we always struggle with, not sticking to a budget, so you don't have to spend thousands of dollars on Christmas, that it's not necessarily obviously about presents, it's okay to spend time with people as well, so. So make sure if you have a budget, stick to that budget, because that can cause stress going over that budget. Maintain healthy habits, so obviously getting enough sleep, spending time with loved ones and just doing the relaxation that you should be doing during the holidays. And then a manageable to-do list, so a hundred things on a to-do list in a weekend is not manageable, so make sure you maybe have a handful of things to get done and maybe spread those out throughout the next couple of weeks leading up to Christmas. And then the last one that's really important is asking for help. Though a lot of us are givers way too often and we don't accept help, and it's okay for us to ask people for help and if people say, can I help you, it's okay to accept that help. So that's just a pretty important message around the holidays is that help is very important for all of us, so, thanks.
Citizen comments, we have none this time. So we have student presenters, first from Parker High School, Tina Freed, I don't think Tina's here. She is not. Then we'll move on to Craig High School, from Craig High School, Taylor Salmon. Did they pronounce that right? Salmon. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Taylor Salmon, I'm a junior at Craig and along with student council being the school board representative, I am head editor of the yearbook and I play volleyball and softball. This past month, we had students attend the racial justice conference in Janesville where they spent the day focusing on racial equality and justice and listening to some of the keynote speakers. At our parent teacher conferences, we had roughly six hundred students represented and our Bags of Hope fundraiser, we have raised over three thousand five hundred dollars and we will have students volunteer at the event on December sixteenth. Athletically, our fall seasons have gone super good. We had some people go to state, Summer Rhodes and Erin Donigan went to state for swim and the girls cross-country team and Brian Bloomquist went to state for cross-country. Peyton Sippy ended up first and took the two thousand seventeen state title. We also had four student athletes sign their letters of intent to play sports in college. Erin Donigan to Oakland University to swim, Noah Berghammer to University of Minnesota for baseball, James Brennan to Judson University for baseball and Jacob Campbell to University of Illinois for baseball. Coming up on December first, we will have our course selection catalog available and our honor roll nominations will be due. On December sixth, we have a parent class selection night, so parents can come and learn about the different classes offered to their students. On December seventh and eighth, we will have eighth graders visiting Craig to learn about the courses that they can take and visit the campus. And also in December, we will have members of our a cappella choir students traveling to Washington DC to sing at the White House for their holiday open house. We've had a super successful fall season and we're really excited about the winter season. Thank you.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes nine zero. Item three, consider approval of the seventeen eighteen district promises.
Good evening, commissioners and audience members and public. It's a pleasure tonight to share with you the seventeen eighteen promises. As all of you know, back in summer, the summer months, we began the journey of taking a fresh look at what it is that we want to define student success as in our district and we adopted a robust set of promises that really in a broad and comprehensive way and evidence-based way certainly lay a pathway for the district to follow. And we're really excited to come to you tonight with the seventeen eighteen piece of that and it's taken a few months because since we have a much broader set of promises than we had in our prior plan, we didn't have, we weren't tracking baseline data for all of the things that, you know, that we adopted and said we want to start holding ourselves accountable to. And so it's really been a, you know, a lot of work particularly by the innovation and learning team and I want to say thank you to Allison and her team, because they've really had to do a lot of digging and they've had to really create, you know, some baseline data and to make sure that we have a real defined way of moving forward so that we can continue to track our progress, you know, as we work moving forward. And so, so we're here tonight to talk a little bit about, about the seventeen eighteen promises without going into great detail. We also are here tonight to talk to you about a little bit of the how these promises are coming to life in terms of the process that we're following. And so there's some, you know, really exciting work that Allison and her team are doing with school improvement plans and revisions to what that process looks like and so we're going to share that with you as well. But before we do any of that, it's my pleasure to introduce Claire Hints to you. Claire is the daughter of David and Ruth Hints and Claire is a junior at Parker High School. And you might recall one of the things that we talked about was, remember we were talking about pillars and, and, you know, the basement and the roof and like what should this like look like in terms of being a really good visual way for us to communicate with our community about what our promises are? And so we opened that up to students and Sam's student, excuse me, Claire is a student in Sam Van Gelder's art class, she's in the advanced studio digital art class and, and it's her representation that we're going to unveil to you tonight. And so without further ado, I'd like to bring Claire to the podium and let her just talk a little bit about her work and then we're going to show you the, the work that's been selected to represent our new promises. Claire.
Hi, my name is Claire Hints, like he said, I'm a junior at Parker High School. I'm very involved in art, it's something that I'm very passionate about and I was very honored when Mr. Van Gelder, who is my teacher, invited me to potentially create some art for the five promises. And I was very excited when my art was chosen by you to be displayed, I suppose. That's really about it.
It's awesome, so we're gonna, we're gonna do a little unveiling here right now and you might have noticed or you might not have, we have, we have a scroll on the back, so Claire, why don't you come on over?
Come on up, mom, do you want to come up? Come on up.
Good evening. So last summer, our family decided to take a trip to Maine, up into the northern mountains of Maine for a vacation. And of course, we knew our final destination, we had our maps ready, we had a GPS, we had the car packed, ready to go, we knew it was going to be over a twenty-hour journey. And so we, we drove to Maine and of course, as we got closer, we started, it started to get dark, it was late at night. We all of a sudden were in the mountains and there were no maps that had, we had no roadmaps any longer, the GPS system didn't work. It had been twenty-three hours, we were tired, we were hungry and you can probably imagine a few words that might have been exchanged at that point. So we were lost, we were driving around in the dark for hours, we knew our destination, but we couldn't arrive there without stopping and getting some support. So many times we may know our final destination, but it's a struggle to find out how to get there. And so the promises that Mr. Pufal has presented to us and that he shared with the staff on our first day of school, they're our vision, they're our roadmap for continuous growth and improvement in our district. And so as we look at that continuous growth and improvement, whoops, there we go, as we look at that continuous growth and improvement, it's for our staff, our students and our families. The promises are what hold us accountable and they provide that motivation for moving our district forward. The promises support that academic rigor, but they also encompass that social, emotional and academic needs of our students. While we know the test scores are an indicator of student success, the achievement, the achievement targets are only one aspect of those results. So our ultimate destination on the roadmap for each student is to increase that in student engagement and empowerment, their hope for their future and our student well-being. We're striving to create an educational environment where all students are actively engaged in instruction and that it connects directly to their interest and it's personalized to their strengths and needs. Our promises are student-centered, but we also know that we need the support of all aspects of our school system. It's the students, it's the staff, it's the families, it's our school board and it's our community organizations. We want our school system to represent that talent, that energy, the creativity among our staff and create that culture that supports the innovation and progress for our district. So as we think about our roadmap and our promises, I'm going to look at our promises, we have five different promises and we'll touch on each different area of our promises. And so our first promise that we look at is our student and school success promise and I'm going to come back to that one in a minute. Our second promise is a relationship promise and that's an important promise in our district because it really looks at the employee engagement surveys, it really looks at the parent engagement surveys to really find out are we building those relationships among staff and are we building those relationships among students? In our next promise, we look at culture and climate and culture and climate is really about that retention rate of our staff and are we really building that job embedded professional development for our staff that is going to continue to want to recruit and retain staff here? And as we look at our finance promise, we really look at maintaining that, that balanced budget, we looked at, we look at how we can continue to maintain that capital improvement so we have a strong infrastructure in our buildings. And we also, another important aspect of this promise that we're working on this year is really developing that employee compensation model that's really going to recruit and retain staff. And our last promise is our health and safety promise, a very important promise as well, where that really looks at student immunization rates, accident rates, HRA, and again, just creating that safe environment for our students and our staff. So our five promises really set that roadmap and that vision for our school and our district. And as we think about our promises, we really wanted to create, it was, as we look at these different indicators, we really took time and as Mr. Pufal mentioned, to really dig deep into our data. So in our data, we really looked at student surveys, staff surveys, we looked at infinite campus data, we look at district assessment data, we looked at state assessment data. We took all of those different aspects of our data and we really built baselines, so we know where, where are we starting and where do we want to end up this year? We know that this is a five-year process, so we set a goal for this year and then we'll continue to increase that goal as we work towards accomplishing each one of these promises. And so as we talk about these promises, it's important that we have our district promises that set that vision and set that roadmap. And so we want to make sure that it's not just about what is the district vision, where is the district going, but that we also know what is our vision and how do we connect those dots between what's happening in the school and what's happening in the classroom. So this year, we did things a little bit different, in the past, we've always had school improvement plans, but we really created a consistent format for all schools to follow at the elementary, middle and high school level, so we kind of redesigned that school improvement plan. And within that school improvement plan, we wanted to make sure that every building was looking at our promises and that the goals within their school improvement plan were connected to the promises. So, for example, as I mentioned, at the elementary level, middle and high school level, we all have the same format for our promises. So if you look at the, go back to the beginning here, the first page of our promises really tells us our school and it provides the, the second page of our school improvement plan, which will actually use this new format of our, of our visual of our promises on this page for every school improvement plan, our teams involved in creating the school improvement plans and then each of those goals that are connected to the promises. So each building created a big picture goal aligned with the three promises, so they really looked at their data within their building, they determined their baseline data and developed goals around those that are aligned with the promises. So for example, we have our reading goal, we have our big picture goal, we have our baseline and then they really created professional practices, educational strategies and then professional development or collaboration around each of their three promised goals. And it was really important that we really target three goals, sometimes if we have a school improvement plan that has seven, eight, nine, ten goals, we don't really have a focus or a direction or a vision. So it was really about synthesizing into those three goals that best aligned with our And again, the same format as we look at, at our middle school, school improvement plans and really, again, aligning those, we have reading goals that are aligned with that third grade reading promise of ninety percent of our students reading at grade level within five years, a math goal aligned with that ninety percent of our students receiving a C or better in algebra. And again, a third goal, sometimes it was connected to academic and career planning or student connectedness, so really that promise of knowing every student by strength, name and need. So the school improvement plan is really taking that vision from the district level, connecting it to the building level and then we want to take it one step further. So when we take it one step further with our school improvement plans, the next piece after our school improvement plan is the teachers in their educator effectiveness model have to write a student learning outcome. And so they take the information and the goals that are within their school improvement plan and they develop their student learning outcomes and their professional practice goals right around their school improvement plan, which is connected to the promises. So as the teachers develop those student learning outcomes, they made sure that they were aligned with the promises. In looking at some of our student learning outcome goals that were written by teachers, one was, one I was looking at was around the third grade reading goal, of all the second grade students in my class will be at or above grade level in reading by the end of the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year, moving from the fifty-eight percent to sixty-five percent goal that they want to get to. I read another sixth grade goal in math that talked about, I'm going to look at the, I'm in sixth grade, but I'm going to look at the algebra strand from forward and I'm going to see what percentage of my students have mastered those standards within that algebra strand so that I make sure I build that foundation in algebra moving forward for those students as they reach ninth grade. Even at the elementary level, I think another thing the promises have really done is opened up our eyes to that academic and career planning, even beginning at the elementary level. So in a student learning outcome from a student services specialist, she talked about having the opportunity even at the elementary level to really expose students to those sixteen different career clusters over the next three to five years. So our, our plan with our promises is it's that vision, it's that roadmap for our school district and the important part at the district level is that we make sure that it's not just a vision here, but that vision is connected to what's happening in the school, all the way down to what's happening into the classroom. So our promises are connected to that school improvement plan, they're connected to the specific teacher's classroom goal for making student growth and achievement. So we're truly excited about this new vision and this new journey and that we have all the pieces connected together so that we can move forward with that continuous growth and improvement and that we are really engaging students in their learning and that we are really preparing them for that lifelong journey and that we have them ready for that college and career readiness that we're here for, to prepare them for their future. So thank you for the opportunity to share about the promises.
Would you like to make a motion to accept? Please.
Make a motion to accept the promises as laid out, as presented.
Second.
Any comments or, please?
Thank you for the work you guys did on this. I love the collaboration, I have friends who are teachers and they'll come up and tell me about all the collaboration that was done, they get to feel a part of it. I wanted to mention though, last week, Mr. Pufal presented this to JACPTA and Ben and I attended too and man, it was really well received. I mean, those were parents sitting in that room and we're saying, what we're going to do for your kids is focus on getting them college and career ready and we're promised everyone's going to, you know, everyone's student will be known by name and just, I mean, you could hear a pin drop in that room the whole present time you were speaking and, and so that, and we encouraged them to speak with their administration to learn more detail about how it's, you know, coming to life in their classroom, but I think it really, really, it resonated very well, so thank you for doing that, appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, dude, just quickly, again, I think I've made this comment before, but that I really appreciate the percentages being as high as they are, that I think it's very important that we have this ninety percent and we don't put a sixty or seventy percent because we know our students are more than capable of doing this, so I greatly appreciate us holding the whole district to this high standard, so thank you for keeping it at ninety and I'm excited to see where it goes from there, so.
I love that this is crystal clear, everybody can understand this and it, it just, it brings everything together. I, I'm, I'm really excited about this, thank you, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
That's good.
Okay.
Love it.
Let's vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, outstanding. Anything else? Superintendent Pufal on that?
The only thing I would add is I just want to thank the board. You know, we have a new leadership team and, and we were here for all of them out of month and we said, you know, we really are going to ask you to take a, what maybe felt like a big, bold risk, right? And to really take a, a different kind of approach and look at, you know, how we define success in our district and you guys were willing to, you know, go on that journey and, and willing to look at the evidence and, and willing to work hand in hand with the staff and the district and to position us to do this work that we are doing right now and without you being willing to take that first step, that was really the foundation that, that got laid underneath all of this work and so I want to say thank you to the board as well.
I guess one more thanks, I thanked her before, but Commissioner Hayworth was, in the beginning of this journey, was our board rep, you know, and she took this with both hands and, you know, she's awesome, so we're fortunate to have her here. All right, let's move on to the benefits committee report.
Thank you, President Murray. We had a productive meeting on November first with commissioners, myself, Ben Dobson, Carla, Quirk, Jim Millard attending. Tremendous presentations from the staff and we're going to, you're going to see one of those presentations in the next section of the agenda. I would highlight that Tina Johnson and her staff have been out in the buildings doing benefits presentations, which are very well received. The goal was, of this committee, was to get information out from the central office to the buildings and, and kind of create that frequently asked questions to help people understand what benefits they have and we appreciate everyone going out as a team and doing that in the buildings. The other piece is, we have transitioned to a new benefits firm. We're very pleased with the reports we're hearing from the cooperation and collaboration and services they're providing to us. On December fourteenth, at our next meeting, they will be meeting with our committee and we'll meet them face to face. meet them face to face since we've hired them, and we look forward to that, that presentation. Anything else, Tina, before we move on to 5.1?
I would just say Cottingham and Butler, they are
Oh, thank you.
...our new representative brokers for the district, and they have, we've met weekly. Every single week on Tuesday, we have a conference call with them, and everything is becoming aligned, and we're very excited about what we'll bring forward in the future.
As you may note from the presentation and from the promises, a key ingredient of the benefits committee is to gather information, study that information, and one of our key goals has been to have better professional development, meaningful professional development, and this firm is able to provide that in multiple ways, including video, things that staff can access online, on our websites, and that partnership is going to be really, really important as we move forward with professional development. That concludes that report, unless the committee had anything else, okay, then we're ready to move on to 5.1.
Thank you. Review of employee retirement benefits, an update from actuaries regarding OPEB Fund 73 costing projections.
Very good, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to try to clarify a little bit and give a historical preview of what we've been through and how we got to where we are and where we're going in the future, according to the 2014 school board approval of the new OPEB benefit. So as we move forward, I'd like for you to first take out the yellow packet, anybody who has that yellow packet in front of them this evening. This packet is going to outline our professional support and confidential staff retirement plans. All of those different titles listed below, I'm not going to name them all off, are included in these benefit plans. As we move forward, those individuals who retired prior to 630 of 2013, so it was before we redid everything, so it says that, that teacher group, the eligibility requirements were that they were 55 years of age or older, they had 10 or more years of consecutive full-time service in the school district of Janesville immediately preceding their retirement, and they needed 20 or more creditable years of service in the Wisconsin retirement system. These individuals, the board would pay the total cost of health insurance within the retiree group through the date the earliest of the following occurred, either 48 months or through the age 65 Medicare eligibility, whichever one came first. Also, in addition to that, if an employee had accrued sick leave days as of the official date of early retirement, the employee would be eligible to receive additional board paid health insurance coverage in accordance with the schedule. So you'll notice there, days of sick leave, 30 to 39 days accrued, so if a teacher accrued 30 to 39 days, they would receive 12 months of additional insurance. And then you can read the chart as that goes down, 40 to 97 days accrued would lead to 24 months, 98 to 129, 36 months, 130-plus days would be 48 months. So on this schedule, as you can see, if you had an employee who was with the district, was eligible to early retire, they accumulated over 130 days, they would receive up to eight years of health benefit, board paid health benefit. Please note on this that the sick leave are only converted based on the above table. There is no sick leave payout or additional board paid health insurance coverages. What they used for those sick leave days conversions, if they didn't need any more, those were just gone, they just didn't utilize those. This particular group is grandfathered into our current system. We have some employees in this system who have a $100 to $200 deductible plan, or a $200 to $400 deductible plan based upon their enrollment. The retiree is not responsible for any monthly premium share contribution, they are not paying anything for that, just so you understand, just this, this group that was eligible to retire during this time period. Next, we have a one-year gap, a little, a little group prior to the, the big plan change. This group retired between 7-1 of 2013 and 630 of 2014. Their eligibility was the same, 55 years of age or older, 10 or more consecutive years, and 20 or more credible years of service in the WRS. Again, this group also was able to receive 48 months of board paid health insurance benefits, or Medicare eligibility, whichever came first, and then they also followed that chart, the 30 to 39, 40 to 97, also being eligible to receive up to eight years of coverage. If they were in the district long enough, they met all of the eligibility requirements and accrued 130-plus days. The change in here would simply be that the retiree pays the monthly premium equal to the active employee premium share, which is adjusted annually. So just this one group, that's it, just this one small group that retired within this timeframe, they are the ones that have to pay the active premium share. Otherwise, their deductible plan, their health plan is the same as it was when they retired. Moving on to the current group, this, this would be the group starting 7-1 of 2014 to now, anybody who is eligible to retire 630 of 2018 would be 55 years of age or older, two or 10 or more years consecutive full-time service again, and once again, that 20 or more credible years of service in the WRS. And we took a look at that back in 2015-16, sometime around the time that, that I came on board, we couldn't verify that with the WRS. There was no way for us to go to the WRS, they weren't going to give us that information to verify. So remember, if some of you were on the board at that time, we went ahead and removed that as a stipulation of early retirement. Moving forward with that, this group is the same, they were kind of grandfathered into that 48 months of coverage, as well as the sick day payout, or sick day conversion into months of insurance. Again, this is another group that if they retired, they could, they could receive up to eight years of benefit. However, the change in this would be, the retiree plan design would mirror the active employee plan design and would be adjusted annually, as well as the monthly premium would be equal to the active employee premium to be adjusted annually. So those plans change every single time the active employees change. The only thing, part that was grandfathered in was the language for the 48 months of board paid, plus this days of sick leave conversion. Next, we have those, those individuals who just, they're just not ready yet, they don't want to retire yet, so they're eligible to retire 630 of 2018, but they choose to delay their retirement. Again, 55 years of age, 10 or more years of consecutive service. These employees is where we take into that, that accumulated date, sick leave prior to 7-1 of 2015, and sick leave after 7-1 of 2015. Important to note at this point, it's still 48 months of paid benefit, however, that accrued sick time is now converted into a dollar amount, and if you remember, the board approved, this was at the time, the sub-rate, daily sub-rate, plus half, which gave us the $147. That's how we got to that $147 per day. So what's, what's happening here is anybody that accumulates time prior to 7-1 of 2015, we take those amount of dates, days, times 147, and it converts into health insurance. In addition to that, we take the accumulated days from 7-1 of 2015 to present, times $147 per day, and that dollar amount can go either toward health insurance or a payout into a tax shelter account. Again, the benefit remains the same, plan design mirrors the active employee as well as the premium share. Everybody, that clear? Good, moving on. Next, we have the next group, so after 7-1 of 2018 through 630 of 2025, eligibility remains the same, 55 years of age or older, and then 10 or more consecutive years. Continuing on this plan, same exact plan as the prior slide, the only difference here is rather than 48 months, they are down to 36 months of board paid benefits. So we go from 48 from 7-1 of 2000, 7-1 of 2014 to 7-1 of 2018, was 48, now we're down to 36. Does that make sense to everybody? Excellent. Moving on, I think it is very important that we understand that we do also have a separation benefit regarding resignations. There's a difference between a early retiree and a resignation. This is a separation benefit, so any employee with 10 or more years of consecutive full-time service immediately prior to separation, who does not qualify for retirement benefits, will be eligible for a sick leave conversion at a calculation of one day equal to eight hours for sick leave accumulated after July 1 of 2015. This amount then is, is converted at a rate of $147 per day, and is applied toward a tax sheltered account upon separation of employment. Any part-time employee, which is less than 7.0 hours, or a non-regular employee, is not eligible for accrued sick leave benefit at the time of separation. So that gives you kind of a brief history and overview of where we were and where we are going at this time.
Let's, does anybody have any questions?
I, I have a couple. Can employee buy insurance by the month, or does it have to be by the year? You know, when you convert the 147 sick days into money, can, you know?
Certainly, we go through, I think it's a half year, Michelle Call is here tonight, she is the one that actually sits down with each of our retirees when it's time for her to, them to retire, they come, they meet with her, she has a whole spreadsheet and calculation that she does, so I'm going to go ahead and let her as the expert answer this question.
We do look at the months that they need, so if they are at an age where their months may carry them past 65, then they can certainly look at that, anytime after 7-1 of 15, if they don't need it, and they're in that timeframe where they can be paid out, then what they do need goes toward insurance, and anything beyond that is paid out. But as for like month-to-month, right now, there isn't that conversion, so it's just the number of months that you need to get you to age 65.
So if I'm 63 and a half, I can buy, well, you get, depends on where you fall.
Right, it depends which category you fall in, if you're in the pre-
Yeah, I'm sorry.
-2018 or after.
But you're saying, though, you can, part of the calculation, I could, if I was the employee, I could get partial, I could get by the month.
You could, yes.
Okay.
So if you fall in that after 7-1 of 18,
Okay.
and you opt to retire at that point, yes.
So... The amount of dollars to purchase healthcare obviously changes every year.
Correct.
And so this, this year, what would it cost the employee to buy a years of insurance? You know?
I do, actually. It depends what plan you're on. So we have the employee only, the employee and spouse, employee and children, and then family, and if you look at somebody, currently our premiums for, range from 466 roughly to approximately, say, 1,500, just over 1,400, 1,500.
So Michelle, could you give us employee and spouse? Because that's the, the most used, or people of that age demographic.
Employee and spouse is between 1,027 and 1,036. That's the full cost per month.
Okay. Thank, thank you. So just over, today, over $1,000 a month. Okay. Anybody else have any questions so far? Thank you.
And Kevin, we-
No.
President, President Murray, we, we asked Tina to do this, this committee has met three times on this topic, and there's so much information that we really felt it important that the board hear the same information, rather than the committee just making a blanket recommendation. So that's why we appreciate that you've broken this into two separate, two separate packets. I think I have 100 pages of paper at home from all the things we've looked at, but this is, this is very, hopefully, clear for people.
Go ahead, Greg.
Certainly, so let's go ahead, oh, yes, go ahead, Greg.
Just, is there any way for us to get the demographic breakdown of at least the retirees that we have by each category?
Certainly, I, I can provide that for you.
Okay.
We have professional, confidential, and support staff currently who retired prior to 630 of 13, we have 47 participants. Retirees 7-1 13 through 630 of 14, and the professional, confidential, and support staff, we have 12. Retirees 7-1 of 14 through 630 of 18, we have 39 participants and three administrators. Classified staff, those were that group that was hired prior to 2006, plus not including any retirements that have been submitted for the 17-18 year, for this next year. And then classified staff, we have zero participants who retired prior to 630 of 13, zero participants who retired 7-1 of 13 through 630 of 14, and 11 participants who have retired 7-1 of 14 to 630 of 18, current total of 112.
Okay, would you email that out?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Shall we move on? Classified staff, retirees. Custodial maintenance, food service, secretarial clerks, and paraprofessionals. Retiring prior to 630 of 2013, the eligibility here, this is, there are, there are two groups, I don't want you to get confused, there are two groups in this eligibility category, they were based on the JEA contract and the ASME contract, so we went through both of those and pulled all the information out, so you'll notice that there are two different eligibility groups here. So the first page is the eligibility group if they are 55 to 62 years old, they have 10 or more consecutive years, and they have 20 or more credible years of service. The board with this group would pay for the total cost of health insurance within this retiree group in the accordance with the following schedule. It was a maximum days of 130 days for one group and 120 for another, which would equal 24 months of coverage, or half of that maximum, which would be, right, 60 or 60-plus, would be 12 months. This retiree group is grandfathered into a 100-200 or 200-400 deductible plan based upon enrollment. The retiree is not responsible for any monthly premium share contribution. Okay? It's different because this next group is 62, 62 years of age or older, however, may retire at age 60 or 61, depending on how many accrued sick days the employee has. There were 12 or more years of consecutive full-time service for this group. In addition to that, the difference here would be that the board would pay its share of health insurance for 36 months for anybody retiring within this, this specific group of employees. If they had accrued time, then they would gain an additional 12 months or 24 months per the, the days of sick leave payout or conversion chart. In addition to that, they stayed in their deductible plan based upon enrollment, and the retiree is still not responsible for any monthly premium share contribution. Moving on, 7-1 of 2013, again, this is that small group in that transition period, the eligibility remains the same as those who retired prior, both groups, however, the following benefit change was made. They, they simplified it and said, days of sick leave at 60, you get 12 months, 61-plus, you get 24. In addition to that, the retiree now pays a monthly premium equal to the active employee premium share to be adjusted annually, however, the plan stays the same, it is still grandfathered in. Moving on to the group currently, we are at 62 years of age or older for eligibility, they may retire, however, at 60 or 61, again, depending on the accrued sick days, 10 or more years, and also that 20 or more credible service, it's the same concept. The board for this group would pay 36 months coverage, and then also, in addition to that, the sick leave conversion chart would be 60 and 61-plus, 12 or 24. However, this group now, their plan design would mirror the active employee plan design and be adjusted annually, as well as the monthly premium being adjusted annually. Again, there is no further payout available for any sick leave. It's another group, if they delay, if they choose to delay, their eligibility changes a bit, they can be 60 years of age or older after 2000, 630 of 2018, and still continue to have 10 or more years of consecutive coverage. Again, because they will have 36 months of coverage, and now we have the conversion chart. Sick leave prior to 7-1 of 2015, times 147 equals a health insurance, sick leave after 7-1 of 2015 at $147 per day can be either health insurance or a tax sheltered annuity. And once again, the retiree plan design will mirror the active employee as well as the premium share. This next group changes beginning 7-1 of 2018, so you're eligible to retire beginning 7-1 of 2018. We now are looking at all employees at this time becoming eligible at 55 years of age or older, and then 10 or more years consecutive service. Again, the same group would receive, if they chose to retire, 7-1 2018 through 630 of 2025, they would receive 36 months of coverage, and then the sick leave payout, which has been explained several times, so I think you've got that. And then we have the plan design and premiums as the same. We also have the separation benefit resignation for this crew as well, so it's the same concept as the other group.
So as you can see, this is all current contract language, all things in place. When we were reviewing the changes to the age of 55 for this group, for instance, that's why we asked Mr. Pennington to meet with the actuary and, and come up with costing, so that the committee wanted to know specifically what the costs would be. The other piece, I know President Murray had asked several months ago, where did the 147 come from? None of the members of the committee were on the board when that was put in place, it was four-plus years ago, Tina wasn't here then, Scott wasn't in his current role, and obviously, Mr. Pufall wasn't here. So we had to do a lot of digging- So we had to do a lot of digging to come up with that, where those numbers came from. And it was a multiplier put in place by the committee back then of one and a half times. So when the paper reported that we were looking at 180, 180 would be one and a half times the current sub-rate. The committee wasn't advocating necessarily for 180, just looking for what that cost would be if we use the same formula. And I think the committee has talked about what is a reasonable amount? And if you would have put inflation in place over the last four years, I believe it'd be about $160 rolled forward, depending on whose math you're using. So that's what we had for the whole board. And Tina's happy to answer questions.
And I also know Keith is also here tonight to provide any information
Good evening, everyone. Just to throw in my two cents, so to speak. We were asked by, as Commissioner Huth said, to discuss with the actuaries two scenarios. What ifs? What would it cost if we did two things? Number one was the bump up from $147 first to 180. If we were to do that, that would be a 22.4% increase in the amounts that we would be contributing to the plan, and that would result in an extra $2.9 million, given through fiscal 2045, '46, so almost 30 years. It's not an even amount every year. It builds up. The detail is in the memo that I sent you. There were two graphs, or three graphs behind there. Be anywhere from $12,000 a year at the beginning, not for another three years. And as it works its way through the 2020s and '30s, it could get up to about as much as $120,000 a year. If we did bump it down to, from the 180 to the 160, then it's only an 8.8% increase, which would increase the payouts by $1.2 million over the same 30 years. And again, annually, that would be about $7,000 a year at the beginning, up to the 50s and 60s, thousands, 20, 30 years down the road when those people begin to retire. Second question we asked, or we were asked, was what will the cost be to the district for this adjustment of the clerical staff, the age from 62 to 55? And our actuaries let us know that that would increase our cost by about $90,000 per year right away. And again, you've got a range of seven years of staff that were not included, that automatically gets thrown into the eligibility calculation. We also would have to change our liability number, and there'd be an amortization cost to the district of that of about $20,000 a year. So those two put together would be about $110,000 a year if we change it from 62 to 55 for that one group. Now, these were estimates based on the actuarial data, the census data that was given to the actuaries for our most recent valuation, which was 630 '17. If these changes were to be made, we would have to get another updated valuation with the data at 630 '17. So there's no surprise it's extra cost. We were adding to the cost per day, and we're adding people to the plan. But we needed to know how much. And even though it's in millions, as far as we knew, it could have been tens of millions. You have to have the actuarial. People do their magic to the numbers. So it is what it is. You have the detail in your memo on those three extra pages. And that was sent out on November 3rd. So if there still are any questions about that detail, please let me know. Give me a call or stop by.
So this, these are the facts, right, as we know them today? It was well-represented and presented. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Go ahead, Carl.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My question is, is that compounded one a ton and another every year? Or is that the actual cost for that year only? And every year, it could change?
The answer is yes to your question. If you look at the schedule, it is not compounded. It shows the annual amounts that, it can range anywhere from the numbers I was giving. But it is not 90,000 the first year, then 90,000 on top of 90,000, and 90,000 on top.
That was my question.
No, no, that is not the case.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Carl.
Well, this has been a concern of mine. And I also did some digging in the figure that my contacts have advised was no less than 180. $147 is too low, $160 is too low. So that's, I just wanted to bring that to the table.
Thanks. I just, I'm trying to just remember how all this came about from a hysterical, hysterical...
Same thing.
Point of view. So I was on the board when we made this decision. Greg, you too? And this was a big, this was a big one. This was tough. Because we were projecting in the future that, in the end, you know, the board decided to make a change because of the cost over time, the sustainability to be able to continue to write this and maintain a healthy budget, right? And just for example, I took, you know, if you look at the yellow group here, if you take the 130 days equals four years, right, on here? So if you take 130 sick days, times $147, if my math is correct, that's about $1,900. $1,900, right? But if you divide that by, I mean, I use $1,200 a month number, right? That gets you about 16 months, if my math is right, right? So what we did there, you can see that in that simple example, based on today's dollars, we went from taking 130 sick days and awarding four years, we took, now we got 130 days, and we're going to give you 16 months. And that's how we save the money. That's the real dollars there. That's how you save money over time. But then you look at, what changed is you can have some money after a certain date put into this tax sheltered account. Is that the right? So, and I think it's unusual for many of our employees in this group that stay pretty close to the age of 65. And therefore, there's a benefit if you stay longer, that this bank of money builds, and you can take that with you to pay for health care after you retire. That's one of the benefits. And then we always, and we have contained a very, continue to have a very well-respected and wonderful health care product, plan in itself. But I just, that's, I'm just, thanks for allowing me to say that. I'm just kind of working through the history of how we got here. And I do remember some discussions when we agreed on the $147 that in the future, we'd be talking about that again. But to what degree, you know, and how do you raise it, is the question that we're kind of debating now, based on all the facts. So thanks for letting me just kind of briefly give that history. Anyone else have any? Go ahead, Steve.
Well, and President Murray, we don't need to make a decision tonight. The committee was very intentional about being ahead of the calendar. We would want to inform employees by the first of the year of any changes we made. So it was really important for the whole board to hear this information. I'm not expecting that there's a lot of additional research that the staff can do. I mean, they've done a wonderful job putting this together. But we did do some costing of what you could purchase if you weren't ill and you were here 30 years. We have some of those scenarios that could be provided at a future date. We're meeting December 14th. If there were specific bits of information that people wanted, we could certainly gather that and bring it back to the board before a final decision. I just thought it was really important. This committee is pretty focused on having the data, having the facts in front of us, and trying to look at long-range planning as it relates to benefits and other things. And we want to make sure we can provide things to staff, but we also have to manage a budget, so. That's why you don't have a motion in front of you necessarily.
Great, I appreciate that. You know, this is a budget piece, you know? We're done with '17, '18. We're already building '18, '19. And we have yet to negotiate new health plan providers, contracts too. So this will all be part of that. Go ahead, Tina.
I would just add to, in addition, Mr. Huth, that we are also discussing this currently because of the timing of where we're ending the plan. So currently, we're looking at the group from July 1st of 2014 through June 30th of 2018, and then that changes July 1 of 2018. So that was part of the other impetus of why we were discussing it.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about what we learned today here? If not today, if you got them tomorrow, I'm sure Tina and Scott will be available, right? And Keith? Don't call Kurt at Jefferson, he won't. All right. Oh, go ahead.
I think the only comment that I would have is, from the financial standpoint, this is sort of the first unveil. So I'm curious with respect to the finance committee, what impact does that have going forward? What does it look like? And really, what other things we would consider to, I won't say lessen the impact, but at least consider what impact that this would have on the overall district finances going forward? So I think that might be a topic for our next meeting. Thank you.
We'll move on. Summary of board requests, I have two here that I'll take a look at. One, we kind of talked about a little bit about OPEB and sick time. I'll look at that. Another one is a request to consider a resolution about this topic called Right to Know. And Right to Know is initiative going around the state right now that is encouraging school districts to consider having a line on your tax bill that specifically tells us how much money is going to voucher schools on there. So I'll take a look at that, too. Maybe we have to reconvene the legislative committee for that. All right. We're reached the end of our agenda. We're adjourned.